All right. Okay. Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting, contract review and approval to order. Please note that all city council members are present. Mr. Hanlon, resolution for final passage, R sixty-two.
R sixty-two author is an authorization for the engagement of professional services with RB Computer Consulting, a sole qualified vendor in the estimated amount of fifteen thousand dollars for a suite database program.
Okay, Mr. Roll, always good to see you. Speak clearly in the microphone for our media people over there.
This contract is with RB Computer Consulting. It is for the databases that are maintained by recycling and solid waste for the speed program. And also the internal control program as well. They have a special database over there outside of what IT normally handles.
And there's only two.
They wrote this.
And it's a one-year contract?
It is a one-year contract and there are two optional one-year extensions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hon calling up. Yes, sir, sorry.
On twenty sixteen.
Pressed by the president.
Thank you. Twenty sixteen East Island Street. The database is actually just the program that we plug into the computer? I didn't understand what it does for fifteen thousand. In other words, is there an employee involved? Is it something that the city can do in-house? You know, hirings are giving this assignment to somebody else. Can you just explain that a little bit to catch up?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Roll.
What I understand from the view of recycling and solid waste is that this particular vendor developed the database in two thousand and five, two thousand and six. And any subsequent upgrades are not supported by the information technology department. And therefore, the vendor that created the database has to do those upgrades. And the fifteen thousand dollars a year is not the, it's on an as-needed basis. So it can be up to fifteen thousand dollars a year if they decide to upgrade the system. But it could be as little as five thousand a year.
And this is the first time we've come to an upgrade since two thousand and one?
No, this is the first time this is being brought forth in front of city council. They do upgrades every year.
Okay, because it's because of the new awareness. Gotcha, gotcha. Uh, Mr. Hon, go ahead, we'll give you another bite of the apple.
What the concern was on the new contracts and the things now is if, if, for example, this year, there's a three thousand to five thousand dollar charge. Does that money get carried over till the next year so that the savings starts to build up when you don't use the fifteen thousand? Or is it like a regular department budget? If you don't use it, you won't get any for the next year? I mean, how does that, how does that work for watching the money and seeing where it goes and how it builds up because you didn't use the full fifteen thousand dollar service?
Okay, good question. Go ahead.
I can comment. The fifteen thousand dollars is solely for the budgetary process. The contract will be written for as-needed services at seventy-five dollars an hour, which I believe is the rate here, not to exceed ten or fifteen a year. I don't, I believe it's going to be fifteen. I think they budget five thousand from each particular fund. So it will be a not-to-exceed. And then at the end of that year, what they don't spend will go back into the account and it'll start fresh the next year.
And was there no cap?
Whatever.
It was, it won't be five, let's say there won't be five thousand dollars in next year's budget. That money doesn't go back in the pool or transfer so it gets spent. And every year, the cost stays at fifteen thousand or it goes up if they increase their rates. We were looking to how to get the money that's not spent into the project on the, in the budget and saying, this is what we didn't spend and this is how we can find it on the light item. You know that from previous, you know, discussions. So how are we going to do that?
It's already, okay, there is appropriations already done at budget time, so it's already there. This is just the contract. What if they only use five thousand of this and not the full fifteen? Then that other ten remains in the balance, the fund balance. So it's, it won't get rolled over. This is an annual contract, a one-year contract.
But it will be something that can be monitored.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
It would be, you know, fifteen, you only spend five, the balance is ten grand.
And that'll be for toward next year in the budget, we have a surplus.
Gotcha, yeah.
And as far as I wanted to say to you, I said about employee staff. They do operate the software and the system on a daily basis. This is just for the upgrades for the software, that's it. We do make, they do work in the system.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call them.
Okay, I'll vote on the iPad if you want to plug in.
Well, I don't think I'm ready to plug in, I'm just charging. All right, let's try, Daryl, I need some help. Okay, I'm good here now.
You hold my mic, I'll call you if you're not. I see you. Yeah, these are Daryl and Julio voted.
Did they already?
Yep.
I missed my vote.
Mr. McQuarrie just voted.
It is not, yeah, there's something wrong.
Okay, Ms. Bota.
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
I really wanted to vote on my iPad, but yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a debate, no debate.
What was votes, seven, zero?
Right there.
Okay, let's continue. R sixty-three, Mr. Hanlon.
R sixty-three is an authorization for a contract with AVE Materials, Eastern Division of H&amp;K Group in the budgeted amount of nine thousand dollars for road materials.
Mr. Roll?
Sorry.
A little louder.
Authorization of award of a contract with Russo Concrete in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for a curb and sidewalk program.
All right, Mr. Roll, now.
This is for the twenty sixteen streets program. And so the charges to repair the curb and sidewalk then build to the property owner.
How many bidders?
Just one.
Just one?
Yes.
Pretty easy. Comments from my colleagues?
I have a quick question. Do you have the street identified?
That was released in the bid, I do not have that on me.
Is that in the attachments?
No, the attachment is just the bid tabulation. The actual invitation to bid would have the streets attached. That was released out to the public.
I'm sorry, that was released out to the public?
Yeah, the invitations to bid are released during the bidding process. That would have included the attachment for the streets.
In the bidding process, yeah. I was just trying to figure out which streets they are.
What this means, Mr. Greedy, is that this, when you get your street done in front of you and they bid a certain amount of money for either a square foot of sidewalk or, and so you can take that price or go out and get your.
No, I understand the process. The problem that I have is that I have people calling because some people get their street, the sidewalk done and don't have to pay anything and all they're done. So the one that have to pay, don't have to pay anything are usually if the state is doing the work. Okay, like what happened on Tillman Street.
That's correct.
Then other people see it, they're right next to their mower and another street right adjacent to it and they have to pay. So that's why, you know, which one they are, so I can say, look, this is what they're calling. These are, don't free a charge because the state is doing it or there may be a, I don't know this. But it happens a lot, quite frankly. In fact, we had Mr. Sanderwood come over here one time and complain of that.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Miss Appa, go ahead.
Now, the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, this is for them to put the side of the streets.
Yeah.
But then yet I'm paying, paying for it.
You, the city basically puts out the money first to do the contract. The city puts out the money first to do the contract. And then the city.
Is it reimbursed by myself if I have to? Okay, thank you.
And then your sidewalk.
My sidewalk?
Yeah.
Louie, sorry about the show.
Mr. Herrsman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you're some for the city council to consider. Tommy was discussing about money. Maybe you should add on each, when there's a bid, by what account number you're charging. You know, with all this money being spent, by what account numbers are being charged? What money, I think, is the better be considered added to it, just a resolution.
We're managing, while we're managing, it's.
That is in the attachment.
Yeah, it's on the attachment.
You don't count.
Oh, you don't have, yeah, I got. All right, let's give a number.
They're what?
For the Russo contract.
They're both capital. Oh, oh, one, oh, three, seventeen, thirty-one, sixteen, twelve, seventy-six, has six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred. And then the remaining seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars is coming out of zero, zero, one, zero, three, seventeen, thirty-one, fifteen, twelve, seventy-six.
It's tough to follow, right? I mean, can't you add another line on each one?
Very, very tough to follow.
Because it is tough to follow, she's saying, and then, you know, I pay twenty-five hours for a budget. So when I go home at night and I drink my beer, I can look in the budget and.
Oh, one, oh, three, oh, six.
See if there's some money there or.
I'm sorry. The request for council approval memo does identify the account numbers and that is an attachment to the agenda.
No.
It's on the website.
I mean, it won't be much.
It's on the website. Oh, yes, on the website, yes.
I can share with you if you want to. You want me to write down for you?
No, no, oh, yes, sure.
I have it, yeah.
I know, but you did it to me, I can sit back and read it. But I'm concerned really, but the big one has come up to one point finally now.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Hon?
Because of the new rules, this passed the litmus test, right, of the forty thousand? This was, everything in here is done under the new rules and regulations.
Yeah, according to Bill thirty-nine, with, hmm, yes.
That's all, I just wanted to make sure that, because it, that's, how many, how many breakdowns is it below the forty that didn't get destroyed? It's all, it's all one, but it's going to be, it's broken down under those other numbers.
It's the package.
Yeah, so that's, that's what's hard, that's the hard part, that the layman, like Louie was saying, when we had these discussions, I want to bring this up, because this is what the, what's supposed to be straightened out, so when the budget comes, we see this. And then where the in-conference money goes, that we have a record of what, you know, what happened. So that's, that's why we're bringing it up. This is just old stuff that we couldn't follow before. And we're trying to get all this information in so that when we go over and see what the savings was, what the program was and how it's worked and when it's finished and how long, like what's the estimated time that all that money will be spent? That's the information that we need. I'm not trying to stop it, I'm just saying that that's the information we need so we can check it. Is this a one-year program? And it take a whole year to get this all done? Or could this be started in spring and be done by June?
I would say this, that the purpose of these meetings are to approve contracts. There's a capital projects program that lists out the timeframe and the appropriations for all this stuff. So the only thing you have in front of you is approving the contract, not the capital projects, not public works plans. So I think you're, you're asking for more than really what council's doing here.
Well, we already, during the budget process, we already viewed the capital projects at the budgets meeting, budget session.
Okay, so that, okay.
Hi, Mr. Hon.
Hi, Helen Hon, twenty sixteen East Island Street. I would like, President, could you ask all your council people, do they understand it? What they're doing? Do they understand this process and what they're doing? Are they just, this is what we're doing, we're just passing this because somebody wants the money? You have to understand these things because it constantly gets more complicated as we go along. And then we just left off, like, well, why do you have to know? Well, we have to know because guess what? We're the community.
Well, we.
I don't think anybody said, why do you have to know? That was never part of it.
I did say that, but I want to know. And I want to know, do you understand it? Do you understand?
Yes, I understand.
Do you understand? As long as you all understand what you're voting for and it's complicated.
Yeah, this is an opportunity, Mr. Hanlon, from obviously the department. And we get attachments and we pull it up online and we look at the, you know, all the information. And I mean, I can only speak for myself, I understand it.
Okay, because I can understand, you would see that this is necessary, so then, okay, then we vote for it because it's necessary or are we voting for it because?
A little bit of both, probably. Would you finish your comment? But yeah, I mean, these things are, these things that are being brought to us as far as contracts, it is necessary, yeah. But we have, we get it a week or days and weeks in advance to review it and go. If we have questions, we get a hold of Mr. Hanlon. Mr. Hanlon gets a hold of Mr. Roll. We call Mr. Harson, Ms. Palmer, and we get answers.
So then everybody does have, knows what he's voting for.
I can only speak for myself.
I can also say that we all take our job very seriously. We get these way ahead of time. We get them from Mr. Hanlon. We look them over. And I'm going to speak for myself, that I look over every contract, everything Mr. Hanlon ever sends me, I look over. We know what we're doing when we come here to vote. At least I do. And I believe everybody else here, we just don't walk in here and decide, well, yeah, we're just going to say yes to this. This is not what we do. It takes us hours and days to do these things that we have to do at city council. It's just not on a Wednesday. We have committees, we have meetings, we speak, we look at contracts. But we just don't come here on a Wednesday and this is what we do.
And you also can pick it out in the budget. This was already budgeted.
Yes, if anything we don't understand, we consult with Mike or whoever we have to consult with. We have, we have the opportunity to talk to directors personally. If we want to talk to someone, we have the authority to just pick up the phone and find out more, more of the things that we need to find out. You know, so we, we're very diligent in what we do.
One clears it up.
And one other comment, follow up from Miss Appa. This is, this is all new. This didn't happen before Bill thirty-nine was passed, okay? So that was passed, obviously, Ms. Eickelwold and Mr. Greedy was a co-sponsor and we all voted for that, obviously. So this is all been to us, though. Yeah, if we said we're going to review contracts, then we need to review contracts. Because before it was, oh, okay, we didn't, we didn't have that authority. Now we have that authority. We can say yes or no, approve or disapprove.
And what's budgeted for? I mean, you.
The money's, the money's, obviously, everything that were proven, the money's in budget. This isn't above and beyond the budget. This is within the budget means.
And I might say, Mr. President.
I agree.
Yeah, just want to make you at ease a little bit. Because I know sometimes you see us voting on things, you think we're just voting. But this is new, this process is new. But this is something that we've been doing all along. I mean, I've been doing this for like fifteen years, doing the same type of thing. It's just that now we're voting for them. And, you know, as you remember last year, see last year or the year before, that we actually decided that we would look at a vote on the particular, every particular, last year, just last year.
Just last year.
Contract that came before us. But, you know, this is something that we've been dealing with for a long time. It just not now before again, for it.
Personally, we feel better about it. Just arbitrarily this comes up and then everyone keeps.
No, 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 Herrsman, no, he was, he been, he been doing this forever.
But Mr. Greedy, finish it.
No, no.
Ms. Bota, beautiful.
And that's the reason why we have different committees, you know, to discuss different things. And like, like Candy that was saying, if we don't understand something, we'll make sure, you know, to ask questions, you know? And we usually get the answer.
Well, that's good, that's good news.
Thank you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hon. Hi, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. President, I just got one clarification on the, on the resolution, on the, on the resolution itself. The actual, sorry, let me just get back in, close me up. The actual resolution says nine thousand, six thousand seven hundred, six hundred and seventy thousand, I don't know, fifty. However, when you look at the, the, the actual details of it, if you look at the number, it says, the second one, the seventy thousand, it says seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty. It's a small, just, yeah, just a little difference, but you may want to have it. I mean, I don't know which one it is.
Okay, we'll make this six.
Is it six or five?
It's five.
It's five.
The mid-tab is correct.
Yeah, it's just a small thing, but I might as well have it right. So the resolution is okay.
Okay? Satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hanlon, call them.
Okay, start voting.
Start voting.
Mr. O'Connell.
Why, it said network.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
And I got a, I think a Mr. McLean is not voting.
Mr. McLean's iPad isn't, and I'm really confused.
You know, in a way.
Yes, we're voting.
Look, I mean. All right, we're going to, we're going to do it one way. And it's going to be a voice vote. One way, no, not half iPads, half voice, we're going to do a voice vote. And it is what it is and we move on because the network is not working for me. And Mr. McLean, who's much more seasoned than this than I am, is not working for me either.
And it's not working.
And not working for Ms. Bota, so.
Mine's working.
So, okay, so we, I think, let's have a re, a re, a re-vote here.
Okay, a re-vote.
We might use it later, but not now.
Miss Appa?
Yes.
Mr. Greedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Wire?
Yes.
Ms. Bota?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
I think we have R sixty-four.
R sixty-four is an authorization for a contract with AVE Materials, Eastern Division of H&amp;K Group, Inc. in the budgeted amount of nine thousand dollars for road materials.
And Mr. Roll?
Yes, sorry. The city released a invitation to bid for various road materials that are used by the streets department for various street improvements. They include crushed aggregates, dome, asphalt, some premixes, as well as some geotextiles. This particular award that's in front of you for AVE Materials, they were awarded some asphalt. And if you look on the bid tab, the specific bid items are highlighted for each individual company that was awarded. So for AVE Materials, they were awarded the majority of group one, which was crushed aggregates, with the exception of one, which was a novin. And they were also awarded two asphalt types of road materials.
Comments from my colleagues? Mr. Hanlon, call them.
Okay, on R sixty-four, Mr. Greedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Wire?
Good.
Ms. Bota?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Miss Appa?
Yes.
Mr. President, seven eight, it's today.
Okay, Mr. Hanlon, R sixty-five.
R sixty-five is an authorization of contract with Cooper'sburg Materials, Division of Haysville Materials, JV, in the budgeted amount of one point five million for road materials.
Let's give you that, though.
Okay, one, five, eight, five, eight, three, two, and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roll.
Yes, that is, again, this was all part of the road materials that was bid out last month. The bids came back, it was just on March twenty-ninth. And Cooper'sburg Materials was awarded group three, which was premixes of these, this particular road materials. There were no other bids that were received for these particular material, materials.
There were no other bids? So for that, for that particular.
Road materials, yes.
Okay. Comments from my colleagues?
Guess, I guess that begs the question then, us not being in streets, is this a reasonable price?
This, yes, this is comparable. Cooper'sburg Materials or H&amp;K is a Co-Stars vendor. But we don't just go off a Co-Stars pricing. I feel we can get a better price through the invitation to bid process with the increased competition. So that's why we do it this way as opposed to just buying another Co-Stars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues, comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, call them.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Bota?
Yes.
Miss Appa?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Greedy?
Mr. Greedy, sorry. Seven eight, it's no debate.
All right, Mr. Hanlon, R sixty-six.
R sixty-six is an authorization for a contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions in the budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for road materials.
Mr. Roll?
Yes, this is, again, part of the road materials bid that came back on March twenty-ninth. Asphalt Maintenance Solutions was awarded the asphalt section with the exception of two items that went to AVE Materials.
Comments from my colleagues about this, R sixty-six, comments from the public? Herrsman, welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not challenging the contract right now. I'm just looking at the last paragraph of these resolutions where it says, city solicitor should be who should sign the contract. You know, the third-class city code, it said the mayor and city controller should sign all contracts. Am I correct?
Senator, 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 the mayor.
Third-class city code requires that the mayor and controller sign all contracts. But now they changed it where it tested to by finance director. Shouldn't the finance director be the person that tests the mayor's signature? And you will need what's appropriate by the city solicitor. So what you're doing is testing contracts. But you do need to signature.
Right, and you need to signature.
Mayor and a tester. So I think what you're having to shift the last paragraph should be reviewed and have a finance director test it or back to the third-class city code where it said the controller should test it.
So we'll look into that, Ms. Palmer, do you have a?
All contracts are tested by the finance director.
Well, you know, here it says it should be the mayor, city solicitor.
Yeah. Lou, it says the mayor or, and/or such other city official. Mr. Hendricks just looked it up.
As deemed appropriate by the city solicitor.
So it would be the mayor and finance director. So we have an answer. Being appropriate by the city solicitor, Ms. Wire. Mr. Hon?
The reason why we're questioning this is because of what happened in the past that's supposed to be corrected when the water surge took place and there was only one signature on that we were told it was the mayor and it didn't go through the proper procedure. And we only, we're not saying it happened, that's why we're questioning, to make sure the new procedure doesn't have any loops in it for, for the thing. Because we had talked about this before, that this is the best time to, to, to talk about it because.
Well, it's all the stuff here, but I'll let you continue, go ahead.
No, no, I know what I'm saying. These are the things that were going to be answered. And so as we, as we see that the new procedure is working and those things that were discussed in the past are happy, I'm saying we're happy. In other words, it seems that the new procedure is working. I mean, that's why we bring this up, with the signatures and the people who verify everything that's going on. So you guys are building a good trust factor.
If anything, now we say it's more transparent, okay?
Right.
We can build a trust factor.
Right, so I'm, I'm giving you an attaboy for the diligence and I don't know. And I don't know, maybe I should say that I might have to take it back.
We'll take the attaboy, make note of that. We'll take that one, Mr. Hahn. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Hamlin, call up.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Ms. Appa?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Greedy?
Yes.
And Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Right next.
And Mr. Hamlin, R sixty seven?
R sixty seven is an authorization for a contract for an amendment under Article one, three, oh, one, six, a word of contract with Winter Spring LLC. In the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Stroll?
Yes, this is for landscape design and plant materials for the Parks and Rec Office parking lot and new parking lot landscape bed. Five hundred of this, five hundred dollars of this cost is actually going for the design work. The remaining nine hundred and fifty dollars will be to purchase the after plants. But because it was quoted together, we put up tonight, Friday night.
Thank you, Ms. Stroll. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hamlin, call up.
Okay, Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Greedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
And Ms. Appa?
Yes.
President, seventy eight, if no name.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stroll. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Enjoy the evening. Now, this concludes the special meeting for the contract view approval. We're going to go right into the, the Rules Chambers Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy Meeting, which is, everybody can stay. I'm the chair. Mr. Hendricks says the vice president is on and Mr. Greedy's on, but I welcome everyone to stay. Mr. Hamlin, let's do R forty seven.
R forty seven is.
Council Rules Amendment.
Council Rule Amendment means candidates filling a vacancy in the office of council, the controller or the mayor must be of the same political party as the person who held the position. Immediately preceding vacancy for thirty days or more in advance of the appointment, or person vacating the position has no party affiliation. Person of any party or independent shall be eligible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamlin. This is, this was sponsored by all city council members. There were some questions in the past about, you know, when Attorney Snyder was our solicitor and Attorney Wild was our solicitor. Attorney Wild gave the thirty-day ruling, her, it was her opinion, and we felt it was very necessary to get this into the rules, so we are doing that. And at this point, I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I'll go to my committee first, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Greedy.
I think, I'm sorry, Mr. I think it's appropriate for us to do this. I think it's what we do. Obviously, we had some issues where people just changed, changed party within the last, you know, within a couple of days for the vacancy. And I think having this resolution would clear up that issue and help us move forward a lot more transparent.
Yeah, if you're old, say, and go, it's about a cent in stone, okay? Any other comments from my colleagues? Any comments from the public? Mr. Hahn and Mr. Hersman, you should sit closer. We're wasting a lot of time for this.
Well, the question comes up.
Go ahead.
On the thirty days, on the twenty-ninth day, and you change your party, are you still eligible?
No. It has to be thirty days backwards. In other words, if I, if I would leave city council tonight, the vacancy would be April seventh. Where anyone who would want to apply for my vacancy would have to be a Democrat on March seventh. It goes back, not forward.
Okay, we're saying, is that a.
It's the original Hersman rule.
No, 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 I know about the Joe Biden rule too, where you don't have to get a Supreme Court judge until it's a political party. I understand all that, but what I'm saying is, is that a fair thing? That that person who would like the job cannot switch parties within the thirty-day period to become eligible to do that job?
Right.
No, no, I'm saying, is that fair? I'm not saying that you can't do that. I'm asking you, is that fair?
Yes.
I, I'm not even going to use the word fair or unfair. I'm going to use the word, it is now our rule. Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Mr. Hersman, how are you, sir?
Fine, getting old.
Too close.
Ah, keep in shape.
Who you can argue, I mean, I know that. My media said on thirty days. My media said on thirty. Why not two weeks, seventy days, two days, one, maybe thirty days?
I, I want to just take a jab, a jab at it and then we'll let the solicitor. We asked the solicitor for a ruling. And the solicitor came down with the ruling and said thirty-day rule, thirty days. So that's her, we, I respect the solicitor and she went for thirty days. I'm going with thirty days. Ms. Wild, you want to make a comment on that?
It parallels the requirement of thirty days for a special election situation.
I know, but you could, they don't have to parallel, they could say two weeks, because it says they're on both, it's a good idea, county commissioners, they don't have this rule. You can change your registration day before you apply. You want to be a county commissioner? I mean, I don't, I mean, the solicitor has their own opinions. I agree with that, but the problem is, any matter from the election board, which I submitted to, Mr. President. There's no thirty-day rule that they, that any municipality uses. We will be the first, the way it looks. So why not change it to two weeks, one week? You don't have to follow it for there, I mean, it's based on what the solicitor's saying.
Well, right now.
The county, the county has an election board and they don't, they didn't challenge the county election. It's like the commissioner.
Fair questions, but we have a resolution that is.
I know you have a resolution, you're setting on the page, I'm saying, why can't you make it two weeks?
Because we want to make it thirty days. I don't understand.
I'm saying, when you consider two weeks.
Why don't we make it sixty days?
Well, make it sixty days.
Or ninety days? No. It would be.
Say anything you want.
Exactly right, Mr. Hersman, exactly right. And Ms. Wild answered that and.
I know, it's based on what she's saying, she parallels something else, but the county parallels and they have the election board that didn't challenge how to pick a county commissioner. You would think they would challenge it too. So I'm saying thirty days, maybe you should consider making it two weeks. I mean.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Mr. Hahn, you already had a bite of the apple.
I, I know, and I know your understanding of the situation. How do I know if I want to apply for the job? Can you notify me who would be of a party prior to the thirty days of a retirement or opening so I can get into the right party? Is there a way that you can notify me so that I could switch to whatever party it takes prior to the thirty days so I can apply by the rule? That's, that's, that's what we're up against in a court. If we were discussing in a court of law, that would come up. How do you notify the people who want the job prior to the vacancy?
If I could just.
Mr. 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 Hahn.
I think it would be safe to change your party to Democrat because everybody up here is a Democrat. You know, I went through this because I changed my party to, to put my name in for the vacancy when Peach Wire left too, so I went through it. But I'm going for it so people know, that's it.
I mean, it won't, it won't necessarily, oh, right now it works. But I'm saying, because this rule will be here for the future, it won't, maybe it won't always be all Democrat. Maybe it could be the other party take over and throw everybody out. I mean, these things happen. So I'm looking for, how do you notify the person who should change his party prior to the opening?
Ms. Wild, Ms. Wild, Ms. Wild, go ahead.
If I may, that, you know, if I may, that would sort of defeat the whole purpose. The idea is to not have people switch their party for the sole purpose of becoming eligible for the position. Because the idea is that the person who's stepping down midterm, that the replacement for that person should be of the same party as the person who was holding it. And if, if people were to be advised before the thirty days that somebody's going to step down, then they would just switch their party thirty-one days prior.
But do you know what you're missing?
I'm sure I'm missing something.
And now here's where the help comes. Because you're doing political versus qualifications, maybe that person who is of the other party is highly qualified to do the job. And it would be something that you would need, a qualified person versus one that would just be a party member. That's the, that's the thing about making it available to anybody, especially if they have the qualifications to do it. If it's so important that it has to be political, then I can understand that and that's the way it's going to be. But if we're looking for the best people and the most qualified, sometimes just because they're of one party or another. And excluding all the independents and everybody else, I think that there's, there's a little squeaky room to make this a little more qualified for the applicant by changing the party.
I think the idea of having it be the same party is to effectuate the will of voters who elected that person in the first place.
Exactly, and the point is you could run for city council anytime you'd like. Well, if you're qualified, run. And then exactly what Ms. Wild said is the fact that the voters voted for this particular party. And so there, it's only fair that, that in thirty days, that out of the voters that wanted a Democrat in here.
Okay.
You know, if you're qualified, run.
Now I'm going to change it. Did you get the job for solicitor because you were a Democrat or qualified?
Both.
That's an honest question.
I would like to think that it's because I'm qualified. I happen to be a Democrat, yes.
And, but the solicitor's not in the elected position.
I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to say, try to bend, to make it fair for qualification of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, committee members, do we have a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to move it forward federally, sir.
And I'll say that motion.
Okay, Mr. Hendricks, accept a motion. All committee members can only vote. All those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed say no, nay. We will move this R forty seven favorably three to zero to the entire council this evening. This meeting is now adjourned. I guess we're getting a picture taken.